Ready. So we'll call the meeting to order.
We'll call the meeting to order.
All right.
Pledge of allegiance. It's a roll call.
Thank you, Chair. Commissioners Bundy.
Present.
Cassidy.
Present.
Daniels.
Present.
Jackson.
Present.
Commissioner Smith is absent. Stulend.
Present.
Vance.
Present.
Thank you.
Do we have any presentations or commendations?
Through the chair, we don't have any.
Thank you. Any report of the city council liaison?
Through the chair, our city council liaison is not here.
Okay, so number six is the community forum. Anyone wishing to address the commission on any matter for which another opportunity to speak is not provided on the agenda and which is within the jurisdiction of the commission to resolve is requested to submit a completed speaker card to the staff secretary. When called upon, each speaker should step to the podium, state his or her name and address for the record. Each speaker is limited to three minutes pursuant to Vallejo Municipal Code Section 2.20.300. Any speaker cards?
Through the chair, thank you so much. Currently, we do not have any members of the public who have signed up for the community forum. I did start a two-minute signup clock, which is reflected on the top-left corner of your screen for those interested parties who would like to sign up. Feel free to carry on with the agenda, and at the conclusion of that timer, if anybody signs up, I'll let you know.
Thank you. Seven, public comment regarding consent calendar items. Members of the public wishing to address the commission on consent calendar items are requested to submit a completed speaker card to the staff secretary. Each speaker is limited to three minutes pursuant to the Vallejo Municipal Code 2.02.310. Requests for removal of consent items received from the public are subject to approval by a majority vote of the commission. Items removed from the consent calendar will be heard immediately upon approval of the consent calendar and agenda. Any items?
No members of the public wanting to speak on this item.
Thank you. Moving on. Can you carry over the timer, please, Manny? Thank you. Eight, consent calendar and approval of agenda. Section A is approval of the agenda. Do we have a recommendation?
Yes, I make, through the chair, make a recommendation to approve the agenda as stated.
I second.
Commissioners Bundy.
Aye.
Cassidy.
Aye.
Daniels.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
Stulend.
Aye.
Vance.
Aye.
Thank you.
And section B is approval of minutes.
Through the chair, I just wanted to note that there is an error on the minutes. We have Vice Chair Jackson listed as the chair. We apologize for the error, and we will make a note of that in tonight's minutes.
Thank you, Chari. Yeah, so approval of the minutes.
I'd still move that we accept the minutes as presented with the correction.
Thank you.
I'll second that motion.
Commissioners Bundy.
Aye.
Cassidy.
Aye.
Daniels.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
Stulend.
Aye.
Vance.
Aye.
Thank you.
Item nine on the agenda is the action calendar. So notice, members of... How's our timer?
We have about five seconds left, and no members of the public have signed up at this point.
I'll breathe for five seconds. Thank you, Vice Chair. So we'll close the community forum. Thank you, Manny. Item nine is the action calendar. So notice, members of the public wishing to address the commission on action calendar items are requested to submit a completed speaker card to the staff secretary. Each speaker is limited to five minutes pursuant to Vallejo Municipal Code Section 2.02.420. Any cards?
Started a timer. Currently, do not have any members of the public signed up.
Thank you. So in their interim, we'll do, we'll move on to item A, and that's to consider a request by Marco Cardenas during the October 2nd meeting to agendize a presentation by Pathfinders for Hope regarding homelessness.
Through the chair, I make a request that we agendize Marco Cardenas and his detailed report as presented to the commission for the first available slot that we have, and I'm hoping that we may be able to agendize that for our next meeting.
Through the chair, I'll second that motion.
We'll have a vote on it. Commissioners Bundy.
Aye.
Cassidy.
Aye.
Daniels.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
Stulend.
Aye.
Vance.
Aye.
Thank you.
Agenda item 9B is to discuss the work plan and potentially form an ad hoc committee.
So through the chair, I'm sorry, through the chair. So our, by motion, our recommendation to the Housing and Community Development Commission is to create an ad hoc committee of three members of the commission to develop commission goals and work plan, and we distributed a couple of handouts to the commission. The first is the, it's a Vallejo Municipal Code 2.26.120 about the work plan. So the definition of the work plan is each board, commission, or committee may adopt a work plan that serves to fulfill the purpose of the commission. Hence, the second handout, that is from the Municipal Code 2, where we have it here, outline the duties and functions of the commission, mainly broken down into the two areas that the commission serves is for the housing duties and functions and the community development functions of the commission. So going back to the work plan, it shall be aligned with the council's goals and priorities, be feasible in light of staffing and financial resources, and shall be brought to the council for approval prior to implementation. Last year, in February, on February 1st, 2024, we had a budget subcommittee comprised of then commissioners Patrick, James, and Carizales. So now we're bringing forth the same recommendation to form a subcommittee of three members. It would be logistically typically more efficient to have, like, a subcommittee meet, and some commissions, that's how they do their work plan goals and then the budget. So it's now up to the commission if that's the path that you would like to take to be able to form the work plan and then the budget based on the work plan.
Any discussion before a motion? Clarifying questions?
Clarifying questions through the chair. Do we have an idea of the time commitment of this particular group? Because it's incredibly important that we be able to attend those meetings since it is related to the work plan and also is related to our budget. So do we have some idea of the time commitment of this project?
Through the chair, I think it really depends, like, how the discussion will go within the commissioners in the subcommittee. That past year, I believe, we had about a couple of virtual meetings, and then after that, we had each commissioner do their homework, giving, we gave them a file to work on with regards to the budget. So I don't know how many meetings the subcommittee will have. It just really depends on what the work plan's going to be based on the commission's goals.
Through the chair, do we have prior work plans that have been created for the commission?
We have not. This is kind of frankly brand-new, and I've been asking other secretaries of other commissions how they're doing it. For example, like, I think, like, the Sister City Commission, it's kind of, the way I see it, kind of, for me, easier for them since with the Sister City Commission, their goal is to, I see them going to the other sister cities, and then they have that budget, they go to Japan or the Philippines, and then based on those, then they are able to develop, like, the budget maybe for the plane fare, for hotel. I know, I think Economic Development Commission had a work plan since 2022. It was like a really extensive work plan. They worked on it for several meetings, and then they brought it before the council. So this is actually really the first time essentially that we're going to have this goal setting and then work plan creation.
Through the chair, would we have two separate committees, one to work on the work plan and then one to work on the budget?
Through the chair, that is something that the commission could do. I've seen one other commission have that, where they have, like, one committee for the work plan, and then they had another item, wanting to create another committee for the budget. It's actually up to the commission.
Then is, is the work plan generally based on calendar year or fiscal year cycle? Or sort of initiated after completion of the work plan?
I, well, I know the budget is fiscal year, so I would like to think it's more efficient to time the work plan based on the fiscal year since the budget is based on a fiscal year.
Through the chair, is it limited to three committee members on an ad hoc committee?
No, we are just, that's our proposal, to make it easier for us to call just a meeting for that small of a group. But again, if you want it more than three, then I think we would have to then, it would constitute a meeting, and then we would have to, like, record it and probably ask you to come in for special meetings.
Through the chair. Participatory budgeting commission. We, we actually did have the two different ad hocs at one time, but usually the ad hoc was only three people. So that way, all of the steering committee would not be involved, and you would have to have special meetings. We were meeting enough at the years, and so, and everybody's time is, you don't want to overload anybody with any excessive meetings. But it, however it works out, that's a possibility, you could do two ad hocs or just the one for the budget and one for the work plan, or whatever, what works for this committee.
Is anybody further questions? Huge voices of discontent. Any motions?
Through the, through the chair, I would like to put forward a motion to recommend to the Housing Community Development Commission that we create an ad hoc committee of three members to develop the commission goals and work plan.
Through the chair, I'd like to consider having two ad hoc committees, one for the work plan and one for the budget. I think that would give the ones who are on the budget the ability to focus just on the budget, and those who are on the work plan the ability to focus on the work plan.
Through the chair. If we do have those two committees, whichever, for the commission, then we would all come back together, we would bring it to the commission and then decide, vote on what we plan to do for the work plan and the budget before we present it. Thank you.
So I heard a motion. Do I have a second? I have to pick one? I would go with...
I...
Can, can we do the revised motion with this meeting, or, Chari?
So...
So with two separate committees, one being for the goals and work plan, and another ad hoc committee for budgeting? Or, or do we need to vote on the, the motion for goals and work plan in this meeting and potentially add an item for the next meeting to, to develop an ad hoc committee for the budget?
Through the chair, I would, yeah, I would recommend, because we already approved the agenda, so yes, we'll, I'll put another item for the next meeting for the budget, and then we could recommend to vote on this motion for tonight.
Through the chair, Chari, I'm going to ask you to clarify that. So here it says to discuss, it doesn't say that it had been formed. So it says discuss to develop a commission goals and work plan. In our discussion, we determined that two commissions might be apropos for this group, taking into account that we have four new commissioners. So for them to put themselves in a position where they're doing both work plan and budget is tasking, and given only two of us actually have seen the budget from previous years. So if there is to be productive work, if that is truly the goal, why do we need to agendize this for a secondary meeting if here, we're accepting your recommendation, we're just saying yes to you with one ad hoc being for budget and the other ad hoc being for work plan?
So through the chair, I wanted to clarify, since the recommendation was to form the ad hoc committee for the goals and the work plan, I, we don't have the, the budget in this recommendation?
Sorry, clarification. We're saying one group to form the goals and the other group to form the work plan. The budget is not here. We understand that. So clarification of terms. Clarification, the motion is to receive the recommendation with one ad hoc group working on the goals and the other ad hoc group working on the work plan. There is no budget here.
I see, okay.
So can we, can we move forward?
Yes, so the recommendation is to form one committee for the goals and one for the work plan?
Yes.
Okay.
Discussion, discussion.
Yeah, thoughts? In, in that setup, would those ad hoc committees meet concurrently or in sequence? So we would first have an ad hoc committee that developed commission goals and then the work plan based on those goals? Thoughts?
Through the chair, could you, could one or two members be on both those commissions? Okay.
Through the chair, so just to clarify, we would be forming potentially at our next meeting a third ad hoc, one for goals, one for work plan, one for budget. Is that, so everybody's clear, that's correct? Is that, so everybody's clear, that's correct?
I think that's my understanding, yeah. Does that make sense, Chari?
Through the chair, yes, it does.
Through the chair, would we be deciding the people on the committees tonight? Like, is that a possibility?
Through the chair, yes.
Okay.
And, I mean, does it make sense to poll? Like, are there people that are strongly interested in serving in one or both ad hoc committees? Cool. Your dance card is full. So is there a motion or a recommendation with forming the two ad hoc committees?
Through the chair, yes, I strongly believe having two separate groups will help this commission better understand the work of housing. I'm seeing some nods, and so I think for their development, we should move forward with the motion to accept your recommendation and, and recommend that we form two, a, an ad hoc committee for, one for the goals and one for the work plan. So on the floor, Chair.
Through the chair, I'll second that motion.
Commissioners Bundy.
Aye.
Cassidy.
Aye.
Daniels.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
Stulend.
Aye.
Vance.
Aye.
Thank you.
Through the chair, we have some commissioners that are willing to participate now and put their names on the list for those commissions. Chari, can we tell you who those commissioners are?
Yes, through the chair.
So if I may, through the chair, say, I think it is Stulend. All these names are going to get with me. I know Cassidy, there it is, Vance, Cassidy, and Vance for the work plan? Okay. And then, actually for the goals. For the goals. You want to work on the goals? You do? I would like for you to work on the budget. It's coming. Chair, may I revise that a bit? We have four commissioners that want to work on the goals, and we have three commissioners already who want to work on the work plan. You want to take that on?
Through the chair, I'll step back from goals and focus on work plan.
Issue resolved, Chair.
Thank you.
That for Chari. Stulend, Vance, and Daniels for the goals, and a work plan will be Cassidy, Stulend, and Vance.
Thank you, Vice Chair.
You're welcome, Chair.
Through the chair, we have for the subcommittee for goals, Commissioners Daniels, Stulend, and Vance. And subcommittee for the work plan, Commissioners Cassidy, Stulend, and Vance. And through the chair, I'm sorry, will they be, will the meeting be concurrent or...
Sequential with goals happening before the work plan.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Chari.
So through the chair, what will, our next steps will be to contact the subcommittee commissioners to set up the, I would think virtual meetings are, okay. So we'll, we'll do that as early as next week for Commissioners Daniels, Stulend, and Vance. Thank you.
Thank you. Agenda item 10, do we have any written communications?
Through the chair, we don't have any.
Item 11 is report of the committee board or secretary.
Through the chair, I don't have any report.
No report of the secretary, any report of the city attorney?
We don't have any reports from the city attorney.
Report of the presiding officer and members of the Housing and Community Development Commission? And we don't currently have any ad hoc committees, so no reports for the ad hoc committees.
We don't have any current ad hoc committees.
Any other items of business? Item 12?
Through the chair, we don't have any.
And with that, I adjourn this meeting.